Welcome to the May 8, 2017, Hingham School Committee Meeting. This is the start of a new season for us. I'm Edward Schreier, and as a senior member of the school committee, I get to preside for a few moments. Some thoughts. Our first order of business is to select, elect, our executive committee for this school year 2017-2018. But before we do that, on behalf of the full school committee, we'd like to welcome our new member, Michelle Eyre. Michelle, welcome. And also, on behalf of the full school committee, let me thank a recently retired member, Carol Falby, for six years of devoted work. Carol, job well done. Now to the election. I would entertain a motion to nominate Cynthia Gelco for secretary.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Discussion. Hearing none, I call for vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Voice vote.
Voice vote.
Please say aye by yourself. Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. I will entertain a motion to nominate Eileen Kelton as vice chair. Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor on an individual basis?
Aye.
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 Aye. And lastly, I would entertain a motion to nominate Liza O'Reilly as chair.
So moved.
Second? Discussion?
I just want to say that it is great to see, you know, Liza, Eileen, and Cynthia coming back as officers. They did a pretty good job, and, you know, it's awesome that we had a very good, you know, year, very productive. So as far as I am concerned, there is no other individual running for the chairmanship. I just want to wish the three of you well, and continue to do a good job. Thank you.
Other discussion? All in... Vote?
Aye.
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 Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you all. Now we shift seats.
Oh, don't forget your name tag.
It was a double there, Liza.
Oh, we have to.
Oh, it's there.
Yours is the same thing. Didn't even notice. It's okay. It gets situated. Okay. So next on our agenda is approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on April 24, 2017.
Do they have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay. All right. Three, questions and comments. Audience comments are always welcome as agenda items are discussed. The school committee has set aside 15 minutes on this agenda to enable members of the audience to raise questions and make comments on any matter of general concern that is not on the agenda. Individual speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers are reminded that the meeting is being televised and are asked to respect the privacy rights of others. Comments against any individual are not allowed by policy 3.7.5. Anyone from the audience? Okay. Four, superintendent's report.
Thank you. You have a number of documents at your place. There is a booklet from the presentation ceremony for the Rising Stars Award, recently held in honoring one Hingham Town employee and also two school department employees, Jessica Matthews and Nicole Piantis, both of whom are special education teachers at the high school. And so the booklet is there with photos of them. And I believe it was Mr. McGrail from the country club that was the community member as well. So quite an honor, and they were nominated, the two teachers were nominated by Paul at the high school. Also, you have in the packet a news release that has come from National History Day, and it's another of the numerous honors that Chrissy O'Connell has brought to us. And this is the trip to Normandy with she and a student. Pretty exciting trip, and the news release there, it describes in detail what that is all about. And I'm sure we'll hear more about it. The trip is actually this summer, so we will hear more about their journey and the project that they are completing as well. Hingham High School newsletter is in your packet and has numerous good news and well worth reading, as it typically is. The... There's a number of pieces of information there about our upcoming and recent appointments of leadership staff in particular at this time. So Mary Andrews, and I think I mentioned her last year, last week, the last meeting, and there was information in the packet about Mary. She has been appointed as the Director of English Language Arts, and she's here in the back. As well, we had an appointment that was announced just today of the assistant principal at Plymouth River School. And so Melissa has made that announcement to us. We have yet to negotiate a contract, but this is a contract that is a union one, so it's simply a matter of agreeing where on the scale she would fall. And the name of the candidate was given to you recently, the two candidates, the two finalists, but we now have one, and that information, her qualifications, is in your packet. And...
Oh, okay.
I think I put it in there, just with her on it. And so we welcome, if I can find it, Charlene Tohngam. Charlene is from Needham and has had a variety of interesting roles and some particular skills that will be very useful to us as we try to complement our principal role with people that have some complementary and different skills. So I will be meeting with her in the near future. And I think you recall that Melissa had 72 applicants for that position, the assistant principal. Of the 72, she used a committee of staff members to narrow it down to 15. And of those 15, they interviewed six, identified two finalists. And last week, the two finalists both came to town again so they could have some time at Plymouth River School to meet and greet both parents and staff members. And so that happened last week, and so here we are with Charlene as our new assistant principal. The high school search is nearing an end as well. Actually, the two final activities happen tomorrow. The site visit for Rick Swanson is tomorrow and will be between 8:00 in the morning and 11:30 or so. And then tomorrow evening, both candidates will be back at the high school in the auditorium for, to say a few words, answer a few questions, and as well to offer an opportunity to anyone in attendance to come up and say hello, introduce themselves. So, and that's really open to anyone who wants to come, but particularly was planned because some of the people who might like to have attended the earlier session when both of them were meeting and greeting groups of people, staff, students, parents, and leadership team members at the high school. Some people weren't able to come during those time slots. So we offered another time slot, it'll be tomorrow night. So Rick will be in the auditorium and answering some questions from Jamie and making a few comments of his own. He will be there at 6:30 for Rick Swanson. And then at 7:30, we will have Rich Metropolis there. And at 8:30, for anyone who wants to stay around from that audience, I will be there, as will Jamie, for anyone who wants to make comments to us about those two candidates. So those are the last two activities, which means that we certainly will meet our earlier timeline, which was to appoint someone the first meeting in June. We actually will be appointing someone the second meeting in May, which is good. And then as well, I may be able to actually make that decision by the end of this week as we don't have any other activities we have to do. And the sooner everybody knows who new principal will be, the happier we will be, I think. And planning can move forward as to time of transition and work on a contract and all of those other things that also are important. So I'm excited about that. We do have still a number of leadership-type roles that we need to fill, and we have a fair number of teacher roles that we'll be filling as well. But for example, we are looking for, I will consider this an advertisement, we're looking for a second mentor committee person, co-chair. Jen Driscoll is stepping down from that role, Courtney Stevenson will remain. And so we have posted, but we don't have any applicants as yet. So this is an appeal to teachers. In the last few years, we've had co-chairs. One of the co-chairs came from the elementary grades and one came from the secondary schools, middle and high school. And so that works out well when you can have two co-chairs, one in each category. But it doesn't have to be that way. It could be two elementary or two middle or high schools. So it's just important that we get someone in place because a lot of the planning for that group and planning about orientation happens over the summer. As well, we have, as most of you know, resource teachers that represent some of the smaller departments. And we have two openings there. We have a resource teacher opening for music and one for art as well. So we've advertised for both of those. They continue to be open. We haven't made an appointment yet, and in one of the cases, we don't have a candidate yet. So that's another appeal to our own staff. So I hope we can move forward with that. I think I did want to make some comments on the Washington DC trip, the eighth grade trip. Someone asked some questions, and I thought you might all benefit from the answers. So of the 360 students in the eighth grade class at the middle school, 308 of them, I think, actually went on the trip to Washington, multiple buses. 308 students, 30 chaperones. Two nurses we hired, not our own nurses, but nurses that we hired to go with the students on the trip. And a paraprofessional was also in that, in that number. There were therefore about 50 students who chose not to go and remained behind. And certainly, we wanted for them to have a productive week as well. So I give our social studies department chair a lot of credit because he, with the teachers that were also remaining behind, planned a wonderful week of learning and also some fun for the students who remained behind. And in fact, the trip went from Monday through Thursday. And the students who remained in Hingham had a field trip each day to a historic site and indeed called it a civics week at the middle school. And so each day, they went to a different historic site or museum. They went to the Adams Estate, they went to the Boston Tea Party Museum, they went to the Ted Kennedy and John F. Kennedy museums, and had a great, great week. So that was their own excursion. So all in all, I certainly received a lot of positive feedbacks about the trip itself, about the arrangements of the close-up, of the company that did the tour guide, and also of the behavior of the students and the organization on the trip. So obviously, they're going to be doing some more debriefing. I think next week, they are meeting with the company to finalize all of the financial things that need to be tied up and to talk about what options are for another year, if that's what they choose to do. So that's always important to do with any activity, and we'll be on to that for next week. But really, a very exciting trip, very interactive. It wasn't just about going to see sites, historic sites. It was very much about learning and participating, model congress kind of activity. So really, very, very interactive. So pleased with that, and certainly thanks to all the teachers who gave their time to go on the trip and the leadership and organization, particularly to Jen Driscoll, who had the initial thought and worked to make it happen. Doesn't mean that there weren't some things that could be approved upon, but it really was a great, a great trip. And I talked to a couple of students who I ran into over the weekend, who I said, "Would you do it again if you were in charge?" "Well, of course, I would do it again." One of the young girls who was in a group that I talked to said, "You know, when I came home, I was crying when I got off the bus because I didn't want to leave my friends that had gone on that trip." So... And of course, the other news over the weekend is a great job done by the students who were involved in the production of the play. I went and enjoyed it, a very serious play, but I was really so proud of their maturity, and the acting was amazing. And also, I can say, the audience was amazing. I can always say that when I go to student productions, but the folks who were there in the audience were very attentive, very respectful, given the topic, and not a sound was heard throughout the whole event. So proud of the work the students did there. And I think that's it.
Well, Mary.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And we... Do you want to share anything with us, or... If you want to come up to the microphone, or... Or Laney, would you like to share something of passing the baton on to your colleague?
I'm just pleased to be here to hear this announcement and to let everyone know that you're in good hands.
Okay.
I've been here for...
Can you come up to the mic? It's because of H-CAM, it's, we can hear you, but...
So just to let you know a little bit, if you've seen the resume and all, I have, this is technically my 14th year in Hingham. I'm married to the computer guy, Joe Andrews, so you have to say yes, or I'll turn off all your internet. No, just say... And I have four children in the school district, one at the middle school and three at PRS. So I'm so grateful to this district for all the opportunities it has offered me. And I'm very excited to give back professionally because I have so much invested personally here, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
I always credit Mary especially with finding Katie, or Katie Roberts.
Katie Roberts is my find, yes. We're college friends.
That's great. Well, Laney, we will definitely miss you in your retirement. I hope we have another chance to say thank you to you too. But, and Mary, welcome, and we look forward to working with you. Okay. Number five, communications. Dot, do you have...
I think... In your packet, I received from Paul just the other day a typical packet of graduation-related activities, you know, rules that need to be observed, notices of times for different events that are related to the graduation ceremony itself. And the graduation, of course, is the Saturday after Memorial Day, as it always is. And of course, during that week, our senior awards ceremony, the graduation, the prom, and along in the queue of those kinds of things is also the athletic awards night, which is always a very meaningful and emotional kind of a ceremony as well. So busy time coming, but it really is important for parents and students to read all of those things. And that information just came on Friday. And also in your packet is a copy of the current list of school committee, subcommittee members, and liaisons. There are a number of assignments that are made so that school committee members are... One is a liaison to each of the six schools. And liaison is not the same as a member of, but rather the connection, a link, a way to communicate from the committee back to school council members and from school council members to the committee and so on. So that list is there, and I think our chair is going to talk about when she would like your preferences back again so that by the time of the next school committee meeting, we would be able to announce the new committee assignments.
Yeah. So, I can do that now. So if possible, if you could get back to me by Friday, May 12, which is this Friday, so I can look at it and get it back to all of you by Thursday, the 17th, for the packet. Since it's Mother's Day weekend. And if you could include for me... If you could, of our five subcommittees, if you maybe rank, one through five, one being one you're most interested in, to five. And give me an idea of what you want to do, and if there's something you don't want to do as well. And if you have, if you have a willingness to chair a subcommittee, but to keep in mind that as chair, you would work, you know, with the full school committee, but then work with the administration to set the agenda of the meetings, be responsible for doing the minutes, and then obviously managing what happens with the committee. Keep that in mind. And as Dot reiterated, for the liaisons to the schools, traditionally, what we do with that too is we finish out the school year with the assignment. So if, you know, we create a new liaison to the schools, that person would start the next school year. So, yeah, I don't think there's anything over the summer, so... But there might be, you know, a couple of things now at the end of the year so the current people can finish those out. And you are a liaison to the whole school. We got some clarification on school councils. And school councils are for the principal of that school and half-parents, half-teachers. It's good for a school committee member to attend the school council meetings because it's a public meeting and you hear what's going on. And the school council may have questions about what's happening in the rest of the district. So it's a good give and take. But also, as a liaison to the school, you can be aware of other activities going on and, you know, general things happening at that school. And we will reassign, and I guess one key thing is we try, if you have a child in that school, we try and have you go somewhere else, since you know a lot about what's happening in that school anyway. And then there are a few other committees in town that, you know, we'll have to look at of making assignments. I know last year, we had the townwide field task force, but I don't think that's ever happening. But then, you know, the fires, the North Fire Station issue may come up, and there may be other things, especially as the planning gets going on these capital projects and other things happening in town. So, you know, we'll be a little flexible as the... An ATF, too? Yes, we will have to have a new ATF person. And then with CPAC and SNAP, you know, we'll look at that with the subcommittee as well, so... Um, that's a good point of, we'll have to figure out how we go about with those appointments of whether we do have a school, a current school committee member on that or not. That's something we'll have to...
But that will be a...
Yeah, that would be another thing that if we, yeah, we can add that. Just if you're interested, that's... We'll have to weigh everyone's time of figuring that out. Good point. So that's my update on that. Student communications, Brad, you want to...
So first, I would like to welcome Mrs. Eyres, hopefully, and...
To welcome back Mr. Schreier, and congratulate them both on their elections. So starting last Monday were AP tests, and those will be, continue to be administered till this Friday. And last Thursday, Friday, and Saturday were the dates of, it's still at the play at the high school. And I talked to one of the people who was in it, and it sold out on both Thursday and Saturday, Thursday and Friday night, and there was less than 10 tickets left on the closing night. So congratulations to them, and I went on Thursday night, and it was incredibly moving play. This Friday will be the junior prom at the Pembroke Country Club. And starting tomorrow, or starting Wednesday, tickets for our senior prom will be sold during all three lunches till next Tuesday. And then next Friday, the 19th, will be grade-wide elections for next year's class officers. Any questions or comments?
No.
Are we going to see you at the lab in the next round?
I believe so.
Okay.
Let us know when we get down.
Speaking of a video, something I should have mentioned before, and that is that H-CAM has put together a very interesting YouTube on the recent Harborman Helping Hingham Day. And it's very well done, very moving, the part where they put the flags of the cemeteries and so on. But really, a tremendous output of work in so many different areas. And it's available as a YouTube on H-CAM, so check it out. I think it was just posted today for the first time, so...
Well, thank you again to H-CAM for covering everything for us and sharing with the community.
Can I, just a note, they also filmed the talk back on Friday night after the play at the high school, and they're going to post that soon. So that was just the actresses and some of the crew people answering questions from the audience. That was interesting.
Is it posted somewhere, Michelle, or do you need to...
It will be, it should be up tomorrow, I think.
Thank you.
The Harborman Helping Hingham was one of the many projects this past year of the climate committee.
Right, as was the play.
As was with Mr. Lockhart. And kudos to that group.
Okay. And then other communications, just following up on the play. There were a couple of us, they got individual communications on, from people in the community. So we logged that as our practice. And those can then be shared with the administration and other school committee as we collect them in case something else comes in. Just wanted to let you know about that.
And...
Sorry, just one point to the log. Can we include, like a, so we can just print it out in our packet? I have, I think, four more sheets, but it also is a good reminder to do the log, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That can just be in our...
Just automatically in the packet each time?
Yeah, the end of the packet, just have that log sheet included.
Oh, in the packet?
Yeah. When it's sent out.
Bringing it in the folder.
We can just...
Because then we can print it.
Yeah. If we have them or not, yeah.
We can look through our emails, sometimes we get tons, sometimes we get none, so... But we could do it before the meeting starts.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And then I was also copied on one other communication that I have forwarded to the rest of the school committee, that CPAC had their election. And we have new CPAC officers for this coming year. So we have co-chair Katie Goggan and Courtney Orwick, and Courtney's here tonight, and secretary Jen Dewan, and treasurer Beth Coys, and PR and outreach Tricia Burns. Tricia Burns. So, we welcome all of them, and we look forward to working with all of you as the year goes on. So, that was completed. And that's it for communications. Now, onto new business. 6.1, to consider approval of the proposed school calendar for 2017-2018. And the school committee saw a draft of this at our last meeting, and we, I believe there's some comments.
It is, it is our practice to vote this at the first meeting in May each year. And we always do a draft and pass it off to the president, probably the last time we're passing it off to Alec, as the president of the HEA, but for review. And you share it with the E-Board, Alec, and then, and sometimes they'll have a comment or a request. There was a request here, and that was to consider the day before the holiday break in December as a release day. And I said I would pass it on to you, and all of you will vote on that. I will also tell you that it isn't something I would particularly recommend. And the reason for that really is that unlike Thanksgiving, when we do give a release day, which is simply the day before the holiday, and many people are traveling and needing some time to do that, the holiday this year is on actually celebrated holiday date is, is not until the Monday after. My concern is always that kids are excited about just about every holiday. So, to say that we should be released early is not, to me, as important as discouraging people by giving them a part day to take a whole day. So, that being said, you know, you, the calendar is, is fine this year. It's not as tight as it has been because Labor Day is earlier, for one thing, this year. And the 180th day as it stands, of course, that's without any snow days, would be June 14th. So, it's not like there's a crisis if there were another release day in the schedule. But, but I would ask you to consider their request and consider my comment, and vote your, your conscience, if you will.
What if, this year, Christmas was on Sunday?
Yes, and celebrated on the, on the Monday. But Christmas is not actually until the Monday that's coming.
Full day on Friday.
I'm talking about this past year, what if we do, we have the full day Friday?
Yes. I'm pretty much a full-day person.
We can tell.
I guess what I'm saying is, you know, when we, so there are times when we may want to have a professional development day or something on a day. So, that wouldn't be a release for teachers, it would be a release for students. But...
Okay. Alec, do you have any elaboration on the background behind the request?
Your request came...
Could you mind? Sorry. You're so comfortable back there.
Hi, Alec Porter, HEA president. The request came really from past experience primarily at the elementary school level with regards to, especially being a Friday, that the ability to keep the students focused and motivated after lunch on a Friday before, in this case, Christmas vacation, can be extraordinarily challenging. And so, it was a request, and I, this is what we do every year. The E-Board looks over the calendar, and in times past there have been more requests. This year it was really just that one. So, that's why I passed it on to Dot.
The platform.
Yeah. Anybody?
So, what is the request exactly, that whether we make this a half-day or a full-day?
It is a full, it's scheduled to be a full day.
It is a full day now, I see that on the calendar.
It's a full day in the draft, yes. And the request was to consider making it a release day. We shouldn't say...
For all schools?
Half-day, but whatever the normal release day time would be, because it is never a half-day.
Can we move the Read Across America to that day?
We haven't shared them yet at the superintendent's groups that, that Jamie and I attend, because often you can get a sense of who does what. I would say this year, probably half the districts that, that we meet with did a release day, and, and then, and the rest did what we did, which was a full day. So, so I don't have a good sense of what everybody else is doing.
Yeah, I mean, if, if Christmas was on Saturday, definitely I would say yes, because obviously people still do travel for, maybe not as many people travel as traditionally for Thanksgiving. Sunday would be getting a little more dubious. Monday, we're really getting out there. You know, I understand the lack of attention issue, but, you know, we all need to learn to pay attention. And so, maybe that's not sending entirely the appropriate message to the kids, since Christmas is on Monday. I mean...
I mean, party should be that actually.
I guess also since it's just, you know, an elementary school thing, but it worries me with the high school and the middle school, of, you know, you lose those days of learning. It's a tough holiday break, winter recess break anyway, because it's so short and the way the holidays fall.
Aren't exams that week too, for some kids? Or no?
No, midterms are the third week of January, yeah.
After the break.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
What was the, what was the attendance like this year on Friday? Do you have an idea?
I don't.
Okay.
But we had a full day, so.
I think as far as attendance goes, if people are really going to leave, they're going to leave. And it's not going to matter whether we make it a half-day or not. I, I personally don't think that will be the deciding factor for most people. And if it's, was primarily just a request because, you know, from the elementary school teachers, believe me, I understand why. But...
All right, I'll be the Grinch. I'll move that we make Friday, December 22nd a full day.
Do we need an official vote?
Second.
Or do we need a vote on the whole calendar to keep it as it is? Yeah. Make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the calendar as proposed by the administration, the 17 and 18 draft.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed?
Believe me, I'd like every day to be Christmas, but...
And I'd love that, I'd love that winter recess to be longer, believe me.
I don't.
I'm having a hard time scheduling it this year, but we will do what's best for the students.
Yeah, but it wasn't that many years ago that we were trying to, thinking about Good Friday, so... Trying to add some, you know, trying to find some days.
Right, that's true. Yeah. So, keep them in as long as we can.
6.2, to consider a resolution withdrawing from participation in the state's school choice program for 2017-2018.
So, you have a copy of the Mass General laws there about school choice, and we have each year to take a vote to withdraw, formally withdraw, if that's in fact the will of the committee. If you don't take that vote, then you kind of automatically become a school choice community. And so, we take that vote always at the first May meeting because we have to report it to the state by the first of June. So, we, and we typically, we never have been a school choice community. And over the years, the major reason that we've given every year has been about enrollment. And this year would not be an exception, in terms of the reason I would, would give.
Yeah, we don't have a whole lot of empty seats to fill.
No, and with some of these apartment complexes maybe coming online with, before the school year's out, I don't know if they will or they won't, but that's only going to cause us to...
I don't know, I don't know about the Avalon One, they have taken down Building 19, if you haven't been down 3A in the last week or so. It's really amazing, because you can see the whole side of Avalon One that faces the, faces the highways. So, that certainly is beginning. The other project has not yet been approved.
Been even permitted fully, yeah.
So, we have a motion to...
I will make a motion that, if I can spell that out, that we withdraw from the school choice obligation for the school year 2017-2018 as a result of enrollment and class sizes in the town plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So, it will not be the school choice. Okay. Then, 6.3, to appoint the district's representative to the South Shore Educational Collaboratives Board for 2017-2018.
Yes, this is for appointment to the board. The most recent regulations guiding collaborative schools is that a, an actual voice has to be taken and recorded with the, an actual vote has to be taken at an open meeting, and the, the minutes of that recorded with the collaborative board. So, I have been the rep since I've been superintendent to that board. All of the other members of the board of the collaborative, our superintendents in the respective districts, there are now 11 districts, because Plymouth just joined us, Plymouth, or Milton just joined us. So, there are 11 districts, we all have to take a vote, and I'm certainly willing to remain in that role. But to do that, you would have to take an affirmative vote.
So, I'll make a motion to have Dr. Gallo continue on as Hingham's South Shore Educational Collaborative Board representative for the 2017-2018 year.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Dr. Gallo, how often do they meet?
They meet six times a year.
Can you send a delegate if you're not able to attend?
No.
It's exclusive for members of the...
We have pretty good attendance, because the, the meetings are always on Fridays at 8:30 in the morning, and we're always done by 10. So, it's a fairly easy application to keep, because the meetings are short.
Okay. We need to open the vote. I don't think I just did it. And in the, the board's role, it's definitely financial oversight, and they look at programming and...
It's very similar to this, voting contracts and policy, you know, union contracts and, and policy on just about the same kinds of things that we would vote policy on. There is a policy manual, but needs to be changed from time to time. And when we were in the business of leasing the current facility and having it built to specifications, we had oversight over that. So, virtually the same kinds of things, capital things, downsizing that we did a number of years ago when we divested ourselves of the Beale Street residence that was under the control of the, of the collaborative. So, very similar role. Hiring and firing the head of the school, that is another role.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. All right. 6.4, to receive a mid-year update of the superintendent's goals, and...
Well, as you're aware, my evaluation cycle is not the school year. It goes from the first of November through the end of October. So, always around the end of April or the beginning of May, I do an update. This is really just FYI, you present, I presented you with the goals we, last November. And so, really just updating where we are. And then there would be a second update at the end of the cycle, and then that progress would be reflected as part of my evaluation. So, I've written things here, I can answer questions, but it was not the intent to do a presentation, because we've got a lot on our agenda. And, you know, you can all read it, I don't need it to read it to you.
So, just as recap, the goals were focused on special populations as a student learning goal, negotiations as a professional practice improvement goal, leadership transitions as a professional practice improvement goal, social...
More of those than I had planned, but nevertheless, I guess it's good we had a goal.
Social emotional needs goal, and facilities planning goal. And these are goals as part of the educator evaluation process, specific state mandated process, as opposed to the general job description and goals. So, it's more that Dr. Gallo is doing than just these five goals. But, as part of the reporting. So, does anybody have questions on her comments?
So, I understand that you have a plan to do a presentation on the Walker Report sometime in the future. Do you have a date already?
Lizer and I have begun discussing about when that should be, and, and what, you know, at a regular meeting or a different meeting. So, yes.
I wondered if...
And by the end of the year.
If you could, before the presentation, release the report, so we can take a look at it completely.
What we talked about too is making a final decision once the, the special ed subcommittee is formed and involving them in the process of how to do that. So, that's, I wanted to do that first, and, and have that group be part of how this is, how it's presented, the follow-up is presented, and how the information is shared. So, I think that that will be a productive way of, and communicating with the CPAC as well, of the right way of presenting them.
In terms of contract negotiations, where are we with that?
We meet Wednesday.
We have another negotiating session on Wednesday. So, Aileen and I will continue with that, and then Carol will be joining us as we had elected her to be part of that. So, we're just continuing on that. And then probably, we haven't had a session, when was our last one? It was several weeks ago.
Remember, we, our attorney had, was ill for quite a time, and we finally have a replacement. That's a good thing, so we can move forward. We did lose a couple of meetings because of that.
So, probably our next meeting, we'll have an executive session for an update.
Actually, I think the, you know, the last, there was supposed to be a meeting in between, but we, with the new attorney, there was some unavailability that...
And what is the, and what is the practice of sort of like starting negotiations with the other units, the other bargain units?
They notify us when they're ready.
Yeah.
So, two other units, us, Starviser, Custo...
Well, it's so incident, they, they haven't, they reached out several months ago, and we responded back, but they haven't got back to us to try to get dates. But food services on the board, food, food services.
And the powers have notified us that they are ready. Typically, union groups like to wait until the teachers are settled. But that may not be a practical way to go this time, because we are later than, than we would like to be. But they notify us, and then the two, the two attorneys and representatives get together and throw out some dates for the rest of the group. Scheduling is a huge issue, because we have seven people on the school committee team, negotiating team, and they have, how many, Alec, do you have on your negotiating team? Nine, nine folks. And, and then the two reps. So, it's a large group to sort of get all together.
But we have three or four scheduled sessions...
In advance.
From when we had the gap with the health issue with the attorney. So, we regrouped and...
The other thing that happens, at least has happened in the past, is that for the three professional staff groups, which would be the teachers, the paraeducators and the administrators, the entire team tends to negotiate for the school committee side. Whereas with the other support groups, often it's one or two members of the school committee that would sit in on that negotiation. At least that's how it's gone in the past.
Any other questions?
Since we don't have the packet, would you mind giving us just a quick update on Goal One, the special populations goal?
Yeah, actually, I can give you the whole, do you want to take the whole packet and then you can share it? Rather than read it, you know? Why don't I do that?
She can have my copy. I can pick it up. So, basically, I'll just, for the people at home, the update is basically outlining the work that has been done with the forming a special education task force and a lot of the meetings that have gone, summarizing the meetings that have gone on with a number of individual parents and other groups and CPAC and the update on what's been happening with those committees. And then, and the plans for the social, emotional task force that was formed as well. And so, and then the scheduling, the update of the Walker Report, which that has really been a scheduling issue as opposed to not being ready to present it. It's just getting all the people together that, in order to do the presentation because we've had some adjustments with the schedule, so. So, we're good with that? Then, next, six point five, to hear an update on the proposed North Fire Station project and its impact on school department transportation and maintenance functions and act as needed. So, we wanted to just share with everyone an update. Ed has been going to the meetings with the North Fire Station and we've been talking on the school committee about the interest of the North Fire Station Committee of looking at the bus depot as a potential location for moving the North Fire Station. And Ed and I had a meeting last week with two members of the committee and then they gave us some updates on their plans. I sent everyone a copy of an email that, so, their committee has been looking at, they did some boring tests on the site and they have proceeded a little bit more with their thoughts on the design of the fire station. And we still had some questions for them about what their proposals, how they would impact our operations there. And so, Ed and I, after we met with the committee, we then on Friday met with the staff who needs to really know what's going on there and has the expertise about it. And as a result of our meeting with Dr. Gallo and John Ferris and Patrick Cunningham, the transportation supervisor, we then summarized some of our questions and thoughts to go back to the Fire Station Committee and get, and I don't want to go into all the details because the Fire Station Committee is going to present to the selectmen and that was sort of the impetus for a meeting with us because they were scheduled to meet with the selectmen. And so, we're going to try and get moving on this as fast as possible to get answers to our questions for the Fire Station Committee of, you know, with what they want to do, how's that really going to impact all the operations on that site? Because they didn't have answers for us when we were meeting with them. And we did share with everyone, I don't know if this gets on the camera.
In the packet, the report is in your packet.
This design shows the property lines, which then there are setbacks due to zoning and so it really condenses the site down because...
So, if there's not a number, is it town property? Like obviously the, on our little map here, it's got houses and everything. And if it's a, what I know is a private house, there's a number on it. So, it's, but then I guess the depot is not on it. So, what are all the empty spaces? Is that town property then?
Well, the property where, that we're talking about here and where the bus garage is and the gatehouse and so on, that is under the control of, that's called the school tract. So, it's town property, but that has been given to the school for managing.
The numbers don't necessarily correspond to...
No, I know, but I guess my question is, so, so you've got the depot, which is number thirty-five or something, twenty-five, and then the remaining building is a separate little piece.
Yeah.
And then there's this other little piece, it's sort of integral to the whole thing, it doesn't have a number on it and it's separate.
Right, that is town property.
Or is that the one we're trying to flip with the...
It is, but that's been flipped.
It has been flipped.
So, yeah, that's settled.
Oh, with the state?
Yeah, but there's a pumping, some kind of pumping station, right, Ed? That is like in that part of that field.
Okay.
So, that's kind of confining part of the buildable land or we have to find out, what does that really mean? Is it movable? Is it operating? Is it...
But that land is usable in general?
Yes, it is.
That little piece of land was originally dedicated in a prior master plan of the depot as land that would be set aside for possible school use in the future. And it had originally about two and a half acres, so it would have been big enough to have a school on it, for example, with the idea that there was plenty of parking in the area with prospective fields and fields that might become part of the recreation area for the school. So, that was the original intent. We didn't explore it further with respect to either the east school construction or the middle school construction because we had other alternatives at the time. But it was originally set aside for school use. So, that school use could be a way to replace some of the space that we might be losing.
So, I have not heard back from the Fire Station Committee since I sent this email on Friday. I did hear from the chair of the selectmen that, well, you know, let's get everybody to work together. And so, I think our request for clarification has been heard and hopefully we can all get some answers sooner rather than later and I'll proceed with answering their questions so they can get done with their work. And we can make sure our operations continue. So, we don't know anything more than what I shared with everyone. This could become a bigger project than we imagined, so, which is another thing that has popped up. So, so, anybody have any other questions on that? Then, on six point six, to receive March two thousand and seventeen high school and April two thousand and seventeen middle school and high school transition room reports.
So, this is actually the first report from the transition room because it was up and running for the month of April, albeit a short month. But it is Bob O'Day who's the interim person there. It is the first report that he has sent out. Transition room functions a lot like the one at the middle school. What always surprises me in looking at either the middle school one or the new, the high school one or the new middle school one is that how much of the use of that has to do with physical illness and in particular with concussions. And you can see the stats on the high school going back over the length of time we've had the transition room. And you can see the stats, but certainly not past data for the middle school one. But the concussion number is really kind of staggering, the prevalence of that. So, you can see this is the middle school list up there. And look at the number of concussions, student one through student ten. It's a little scary as to what happened before we had this place for kids with concussions who want. And it's not just having a concussion, but a concussion to the extent that the person can't really function, fully function in the classroom and need to be elsewhere. So, good that we have it.
Do we know in the, I saw some of the data, but in the high school, the concussions are, most of them related to our own sports teams or the, I mean, there was, there were some...
Not all of them because some of them are not related to sports. But the sports one are primarily related to our own program. But, you know, kids get concussions with hexos, the harm and other sorts of things, but... But remember the original reason for having this kind of a space for kids that had some social and emotional issues and perhaps had been hospitalized but still not ready to return to class.
Yeah.
But the predominant use of it now is with concussions, which is fine if that's what's needed. You know, it's good that we can provide something that kids can benefit from. But it was not the original plan.
With the awareness of concussion treatment, that's better in the long run, they're treated well, I guess.
Well, it's good to see though, I mean, it seems like at both schools, there's been a big jump since the first three years, the last two years really jumped. So, it looks like it's really actually, you know, definitely taken it off and everybody must now know it's there as a resource, given the increase in the numbers.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to watch the middle school, I guess. And it seems like at the high school, the trend is at the end of the year, the usage starts to decline. People are excited that they're getting out. Anxiety levels go down. But, so then the transition room will remain next year at the middle school full time?
Yeah, you remember the genesis of that, we asked for it in the budget for the current year.
Yeah.
And it wasn't one of the things that passed the cut in terms of the advisory committee's recommendation. However, as we settled the budget at the, at their goal and were approved at town meeting for that budget, the school committee, we suggested that the school committee allow us to monitor other changes in personnel that might occur. And if in fact, we were able to find sufficient savings in the budget that existed, that this would be the highest priority of the things that weren't funded in the FY seventeen budget, to have a transition room at the middle school. So, we did have some savings that allowed us to get the budget in line with what was voted at town meeting, which of course is important. But at the start of the year, we didn't have significant additional savings that would allow us to put that transition room in place. But we decided that we would wait and continue to look at what savings we had. And by the time we got to December, we had sufficient savings that would fund this and if we funded it for half the year. So, we decided to do that. We did advertise for a person that would manage that room. January isn't always the best time to be looking for teachers in most categories anyway. So, we didn't find a candidate that we thought was the right thing. And I think most of you know because you hear us talk about it enough, that the high school transition room is the success it is largely because of the person that we have in place. It's a unique kind of role and we had a wonderful candidate. So, we decided that rather than put a candidate that was not all that we wanted in place, we would be better starting the transition room and having someone that we knew could manage it on an interim basis. And so, we did find such a person right amongst us. And he's had administrative experience, he's been a principal, he's been an assistant principal, long-term sub, many things. This is Bob O'Day I'm talking about. So, we decided, asked Bob to do this to establish it because we knew he had sufficient administrative experience to do that. He has wonderful relationships with kids in terms of his subbing. And so, to have him get it started and work through the spring and be able to advertise again this spring and summer in the hope that we would get the long-term permanent person. So, we think that was a good, we didn't want to lose out on the opportunity to do that this year. And so, that is the route that we've, that we've gone.
I will be curious to see though, you know, to some extent, how it does play out at the middle school because I think, I mean personally, and I'm certainly not downplaying the concussion issue or the fact that it's an important benefit for those students. But I think when I was voting for it, I was seeing it as more of a place in the mental well-being world. And so, I'm surprised that it's, it seems like it's virtually been all at the middle school so far. And it's very early on, obviously.
Well, I agree, we intended it even at the high school for a different thing. As long as we are manage, able to manage concussions as well, I think that's great. I don't know that I could justify having it only for concussion.
I mean, at the high school, there's clearly a lot of other, more than half the students have other things than concussions.
Exactly, yeah.
Whereas at the middle school, it's all concussion. So, I'd like to really keep an eye on that going forward.
I agree with Aileen.
And are you tracking that data, I know it's a snapshot, but I was just flipping through and there's relatively, you know, are you tracking it by grade slash issue? And using that information in the social, emotional, like was that rolled into the analysis from the adjustment counselors that is being used? Because, you know, I'm assuming the eleventh graders are stressed, that kind of thing.
There's a gatekeeper. In other words, we don't just invite anyone, drop in the door and you can be assigned to the transition room. That was one of the first thing we did at the middle school was to define how one gets in and how one gets out and who gets to be the gatekeeper. And so, that's a very well-defined process. And so, because it is defined as to who gets in and how they get in and how they get out, the data is there for that, so.
Well, hopefully, students will and families will understand what's happening now and then next year.
And you remember that with the, with the high school one, and it will be true here too, that one of the big reasons for putting it in place, not only was because we had, we knew we had incidents of kids with social, emotional issues and possible hospitalizations that couldn't come right back to school, but it also was because children can't really spend the whole day in the classroom. We're spending their day sitting on the floor in the guidance office and, you know, not the best productive place for them and certainly not how we want our counselors spending time when they have other things to do as well. So, it is important to monitor it and we certainly will.
Great. So, six point seven, to receive... So 6.7, to receive notification of appointment of parent educators at the high school and the middle school. And are these replacements or?
I think there are a couple of retirements that we hadn't yet reported to you about.
Oh, these are appointments. Yeah, we had, there's notification of resignation for the purpose of retirement, 6.11, Anita Brooks and Elaine Foley, who are parent educators at Foster.
Two very long-term parents, I would say, as well.
And the other thing happens too, is they take over the, a more experienced parent may take over for a teacher on maternity leave. So that parent moves in and then we have to get a temp with them for the rest of the year.
Okay.
So that's really what's going on here.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay. Thank you, John.
And congratulations to Heather Benner, who has just been appointed as an assistant principal in New Orleans.
So she will be leaving us as a foster teacher? And we talked about the appointment of Robert O'Day at the middle school as an interim transition room coordinator. And 6.9, received notification of the appointment of Michelle Pearson as the assistant of food services director. And that was something that was announced to families. And we were very fortunate that Kim found a replacement for a position and someone who has, but that has food service experience to fill in for a clerical position. So we got bonus.
Michelle was an intern here, so she's, you know, she's certified and she's getting a master's degree. So Kim does need an assistant.
Yeah.
The program continues to grow and do very well. So yeah, this was, this was sort of a transition plan of figuring out, okay, hey, we have this slot that just opened up. Can we fill that and get someone more experienced as well? So.
That's great.
And doesn't impact the budget, obviously, because the food services program.
One thing she is going to be working on for us too, is the social networking, marketing, you know, potentially even, you know, using the phones to order your meals so that they're ready when you get there, you know.
Wow. Wow. I know at the colleges, you can order your coffee.
That's where we want to go. Yeah, that's where we want to go. And Michelle's got the knowledge to try to lead us there, so.
I know they've been playing around with that in the high school, with the deli orders.
Yeah, with the, right now with the email, but I mean, this would be more, you know, trying to get the app to work so that, you know, it works. Because this is the new world, right? I mean, this is what the students are looking for. As much as we say, don't use your phone, their phones are there and.
We might have to steal her to do some other things along those lines.
We need to focus in this area first and then we'll move.
We'll test, we're going to test it there and then we'll see if we expand. Well, that's good. Always want to stay on the cutting edge. And where am I? I'm skipping around, I apologize. 6.12, and then to receive notification of the resignation with the purpose of retirement of Gail Sadowski, who's a teacher at South School.
Special education teacher.
So sorry to see all these people retire. Now, seven, other items, as may not be reasonably known, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. I understand we have a budget update.
Well, you know, at the last meeting, when I did the budget update, knowing that we were about $100,000 away from where we needed to be to align our budget with the budget that was voted by advisory committee and also by the town meeting, I was a little uneasy because I didn't have anything new to offer there. But, you know, miracles do happen. And at the end of last week, we had information that allowed us to feel very comfortable that we would meet the target that we needed to be at, obviously the budget that was approved for us, and that we would meet it with room to spare. And therefore, we're pretty confident that we could go forward with the plan that you folks all voted on, which was if there were sufficient savings, new savings to come, and our budget were in balance and alignment with the advisory committee and the town meeting vote, then the first priority for any additional funds was to move forward the post-secondary planning center role at the high school from a tutor rate, an hourly rate, to a teacher salary, guidance counselor rate. She's a certified guidance counselor and we've left, lost a couple of prior people in that role specifically because they want a full-time role and not a tutorial rate. So we are aware, we think, John and I think, that we can do exactly that. So that's a very good thing.
That's great.
And there's some additional savings. Let me go over these and then tell you that there are even some additional savings that are going to come along beyond these. Not in large numbers, but additional dollars. So, uh-oh, what happened here? So, so this is a slide that you've seen before. On the right at the top is the budget that we are in for this year and then broken down into regular education and special education. To the left on the top is the budget where we started for FY18, the budget we first presented last January, and again, broken down by regular education, special education, and the percent change. So at that point, we were requesting a 5.6% increase from FY17 to FY18. We made a number of reductions along the way. Some were just gratuitous occurrences and others were very well-planned to try to reduce the level of the budget. And so you can see the reductions there in the, in the middle column, in the middle block of $572,888. We reduced the budget. And you can see that broken down into the regular ed and the special ed as well. So if you take the preliminary budget that we started with and you, in the two categories of regular ed and special ed, and then you reduce it by the reductions, the total number of reductions that we've now made in that budget, you get to $49,706, excuse me, $49,706,673 as of today. We needed to get to 49,762,697 to be in balance. You see that we're over that, which means that we have $56,024 available dollars that aren't assigned to a category. And that is the 4.51% increase that advisory committee recommended and that the town meeting actually voted. And then this is a long list, and I won't go through every item because some of them go back to February and March. These are all of the ways in which we made reductions that got us to where we need to be. Some of them are people that are taking a full leave next year. Some of them are folks who took a leave of absence this year and have decided to continue with that leave. Some of them dollars as savings from someone retiring and are replacing that someone with a less costly hire. Some of them are things that we've been able to charge off to as offsets, utility savings, for example, kids in action, increasing what they reimburse us for in terms of things like energy and transportation, a whole variety of things. And at one point earlier in the year, we had some significant savings because of looking again at our electricity expenditures proposed for the following year. But just the other day, you heard that electricity rates in Hingham are going down rather significantly. Because at the same time, water rates are going up. That's not going to bounce off exactly. But there was some significant savings predicted just the other day. And the amount of that savings is 79,117.
Yeah, 10%.
Just based upon that reduction.
It's a great reduction.
As I said to a couple of people today, of course, that means that if we're saving on electricity because of rates, then the town is also saving on electricity.
Do we know what the water impact's going to be yet?
Well, what if the overall budget for water is only 72,000?
Oh, okay.
It wouldn't be really significant.
14% is what they're requesting. Whether they get that or not is another matter.
That's not going to matter too much.
Okay.
It was just that sleepy little comment that Ted mentioned when town meeting opened up, that electric rates are going to come down and there's going to be significant savings in town. So this projection here is saying 10%. They could go down greater than 10%, but I'm conservative. So it's like, you know, Paul tells me I'm going to go down more, but I've asked him about his calculations and I've said, you know, where's it coming from? Is it like a fund that you have, a balance that you have? Or is your cost of energy going down? You know, so I asked him all the scenarios of like, how is it that you actually have this money to come up and reduce your revenues, basically? And he said it was a combination of all of those things. So I felt comfortable, okay, I'll take the 10% that they talked about. You know, and everybody residential got letters, we all got letters, saying it was going down 10% and they're saying commercial is supposed to be 31%. Now, that, I'm a little suspicious of. So I'm not, I would never go 31%, but I feel comfortable with 10%. And I think it's great. It's just great for, for the town, great for all the people. I mean, you know, and it didn't get much notice. Didn't get, it was just a little notice next to the legal ads in the journal, but it's actually big news.
It got big news at town meeting.
Yes.
And then in addition to what's on this sheet, that leaves us with the $56,000 yet unassigned. In addition to that, we have, we've had in the last week, another retirement that we did not anticipate, two more folks that are going to take a full year leave next year, two new moms that had intended to come back next year and now are going to take another year leave. And then one other thing I forgot to mention to you today, John, in terms of some additional savings, which we have not taken yet, is we have a teacher who had intended to retire in October on a birthday. And so we budgeted, knowing we'd have to put someone in place for the beginning of the year and, and the person is in a role that is an expensive role. And so we knew also that we were likely going to have to hire a replacement who was more expensive than the person who's in the job now. And on Friday, the individual decided she would retire at the end of this year. So there's that extra that we had to put in the budget when we built it that we can now take out again. So, so we're happy about all of those things. I don't think, no others that we should point out.
Well, some offsets for food service. There's, you know, food services is.
Oh, yeah, good point.
Is standing on its own now. So we've actually taken some offsets to contribute to the central office overhead. There is, we get separate meters for their gas bills for the ovens and stuff, so we know we can sort of isolate that amount of money, so we're going to charge that off. And then also Kim has told me that our maintenance staff does go there and troubleshoots a lot of their equipment, even though most of it's outsourced to get fixed. But there's a portion of our, you know, an allocation for maintenance-type troubleshooting services that will start taking an offset for next year. And in these, I wouldn't do this, of course, unless I thought that the business was growing and we could recur this year over year. So this is a start and perhaps will be going up in the future.
With that app going.
Hey, the app, the app. Or the social networking and, you know, selling, marketing on their terms would be a great deal. Everybody be eating good, healthy meals at great prices and.
And having fun doing it because they're ordering it on their phone in advance.
That's right.
Okay.
What's the, so I was just trying to figure out where all the differences are. This is great. The teacher resignation, that's the first line under our 2300. Last time the report's at 15 and now it shows 35.
Well, it could be a different, it could be a different one.
Okay.
Because one of our newest retirements is a special ed teacher.
Got it.
Probably is a new one.
And that 15 is still there then?
It may be, that may have been a, I might have had an error on that and that could have been the special ed.
Okay.
Because I had, at one point, in one of the charts, I had a number backed up with.
Yeah, one of the early ones of these, we did, the special ed person and the regular ed person got mixed, so the savings were, that was something we corrected a long time ago, because it was one of the first errors we made. I would say as well that we still don't know about the two new vocational, the three new vocational applications. And one of them, the parent decided not to pursue the application and withdrew it. But there's still are two out there that are possible. So it's so good to have a cushion there. And certainly, we're not looking to say because there's money, we will spend it. That's not our goal. Our goal was to get to that one other position. But as well, because we haven't finished our hiring yet and you can't always hire within budget, sometimes you have to hire, hire in a particular category where there are few candidates. So it's good to know that we have a cushion against some of that unanticipated things that could come along or new information about the vocational ones.
So is there any likelihood of you hiring a replacement for the special ed teacher before she leaves?
Before she leaves? Probably not. We're just beginning posting for the general hiring now because we always feel we need to wait until the town meeting is over and the actual budget is really voted. And so that has happened. So we're beginning to post for these, for these things. But most of our hiring happens in May and June. So I would guess we'd be before.
So it would happen in sync with the school year? So we wouldn't be without a teacher? If that's what you were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So she'll retire in October, right?
This.
This October, right?
Yeah.
No, she said originally she was going to hire.
Oh, this is a different person.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know you were talking about the special ed one and that as of the October one. We had two October ones.
Oh, so there were two.
One of them actually is a nurse. And so she's going to retire at the end of the school year. The other person will retire in October. So, so for that one, certainly we would consider trying to get someone in place so that we don't have a gap with kids. And in fact, what we did in the other place, we budgeted to hire at the beginning of the year, even knowing it was going to cost us two, two teachers, because the person has to stay here until October. Most people who retire on a date other than the end of the school year are retiring on their birthday. So someone who's planning on that in order to get the best retirement that she can isn't going to change that date. So the only thing we can do is either hire later or, or budget enough to pay two people for a time. So, I'm sorry, I.
That's okay.
We were talking about two different people. So it's this nurse one that's back to the end of the year.
Okay, so right now, we're just looking at the high school.
That's really all you gave us authorization to do.
Yep, the big support for high school guidance, which has been our want and need for a couple of years now. So that will help out that whole guidance team, which will be great. And then we'll wait and see as needs develop and as the hiring goes.
I mean, I'd like to think we're going to get through the hiring season, but we also have an ability if we have some unexpected thing between now and, and the start of school. And in particular, we've got such a thing, we've got one position right now that we know we can't hire at the rate, because it was a position we were going to add on to. So we know the salary of the person. We can't replace the particular person for that rate. But we do have three excellent candidates. We would be happy to know about that. So there's a place where I might have had to say, you know what, even as the best candidate, we don't have money in the budget to go that much higher.
So now we have a little cushion to. So, now we have a little cushion to move around.
So, we have a cushion to go there, because the person currently in the role at Masters III, and Paula feels the best candidate is at Masters VIII, and that's a big dollar gap, so.
Now, the, the, the change in the person who in the guidance office helps with all of the college planning stuff. She will still clearly be designated primarily-
Yes.
Because I, I know the guidance office has a lot on their plate.
Right.
I just want to be sure she doesn't end up taking on so many guidance roles that now, all of a sudden, we need to hire a new person to do the college piece.
Right. I would see her, and I haven't talked recently with Heather about this, and certainly will, but I would see her as possibly, not unlike Heather, having a small load, so it takes a little bit of impactive individual students off the load, but the, her main function isn't as a regular counselor, but is as a counselor who can specially work on those post-secondary planning.
Okay.
So, that would be a way to-
Maybe she could help with taking the other counselor's college stuff to, yeah. Hey, hopefully, it just gives Heather some flexibility-
Yeah, it does.
-of the additional load of students.
Yeah. And especially knowing it before someone else offered her a job is, is a good thing.
Yeah. Yeah. Great. Well, that's good. Good news for the high school.
Is there any update, I mean, you have heard anything on the MSBA application? Because last week, I actually attended-
We actually got into their, their thing today, their, what is it, their-
The web portal?
Their portal. You have to get permission and a password to get into the portal, because they just have put into the partial, portal, all of the reports, preliminary reports that they did based upon their December visit. And so, they went to each one of our schools, they talked to the principals, the principals all had to fill out templates of information about the school, and so, we now have the draft of that. And we have about two weeks to review it and be sure it's accurate. And then, the final report won't get to us till probably July. But in terms of knowing anything more about the SOI submission, other than that they received it, we don't have any.
So, last week, last Thursday, the 4th, I attended a meet and greet, sort of like, you know, know everything that treasured us with the treasured Debbie Goldberg and women.
Who's chairman of the board, people should know her, MSBA.
Right. So, she, you know, because of that, obviously, I mentioned to a couple of people out there, and Sarah Mason also attended, one of the parents at Foster. It was great, because it sort of, we sort of like brought it up, that we applied for, you know, to build a school that is, or to look at the feasibility study at Foster, and to please pay close attention to it, that we would appreciate her help. So, you know, she guided her assistant to looking into for us. As a matter of fact, she did right away and got back and say, will you hope that by the end of the school year, we'll have an answer for you guys?
Oh.
Really?
So, you know, it's kind of nice. But then, I introduced for you Sarah, 101, so Sarah could do her pitch. So, it was a good thing.
Good.
So, so, you know, now we have to start lobbying a little bit about it.
Well, that's very good news.
And then, also on that note, on last Tuesday, I think I mentioned to a couple of you, and I mentioned it to Don and John, I met with some other school committee members from Newton, Lexington, Winchester, Arlington, that came together off of the Mass List Serve, and these communities all have growing enrollment, and they all are submitting requests to the MSBA. And Alice Peish, who's the chair of the Education Committee in the House of Representatives, had been in touch with some of these people and had asked for what feedback from towns that have growing enrollment and their interaction with the MSBA, because, you know, we keep, towns like us, we keep going back to the MSBA, but, you know, we need the help. And so, I, we're kind of a little bit ahead of the curve. They've had like one project, and now are putting together their master plans and are looking to the future, whereas, we're in the situation where we're sort of the end of a cycle of a master plan, starting a new one, and we had the two projects, and now we need to, you know, repair an emergency situation, so, you know, our enrollment is leveling off. But, you know, we're in similar situations, similar age of schools. The urban districts are, you know, they're confined with the amount of land that they have, and, and I guess all of us are facing with, you know, we can't have land, it's too expensive to buy more land, so we have that, that added component. So, we're pooling some more data of our enrollment numbers and what our needs are, our pre-K numbers too, to show that, you know, it'll keep going. So, they, these more urban districts, you know, these are all also high-performing academic districts. They have the challenge of, you know, society shift, of parents wanting to live in a more urban environment and, you know, walk to communities and, and things like that. So, but I told, you know, we have development here too, and access to commuter rail and boats and things, so. So, we're all still consolidating information, and with the mission of reporting back to the Alice Peish in the house on that. So, hopefully, we have all angles-
Covered.
-covered, and-
I was at a conference last week, and I did the, MSBA was represented there, and I did go up and speak with Diane Sullivan after the fact, and they did in fact receive the SOI, and she was aware of what was in it, and, and then also, I know that they've got 83 SOIs this year.
Is that a lot, or is that average?
Well, yeah, it's, you know, I mean, the past three years, I think, as I tracked them, I think one year was 87, one might have been 96, and another year, 117. So, 83 is a pretty good number, but still, you know, only the, I think it was like 17 and 23 were, were taken those previous years, and it depends on what the revenues will be.
Yeah.
So, you know, you, it's about a quarter. But, you know, they were well aware of us, so.
Two other things related to this, this budget and staffing dilemma. This is the week that we're doing staffing. So, last Tuesday, Jamie and I went to the high school, spent the day with Paula and Derek, and then with one by one, each of the directors, objective directors, and each of the resource teachers, and they came in having taken the tallies of what kids selected, and trying to match that with the staffing FTEs they knew they had and all they had. And they had met prior with both Derek and Paula to see where they were, and sent, you know, a panic call out to me saying, oh my gosh, our class size is, this is secondary now, particularly at the high school, it's really going to be high because we didn't add any new FTEs, teaching FTEs, because we were in the level services this year. We do anticipate about 40 additional students at the high school, but they kept working at it. By the time we got there last Tuesday, everybody had some creative ideas, so we have worked out the secondary scheduling, so that we're in a much better place than we thought we would be. However, really important to know that, so because of some creative thinking, we got away this year with all that was allocated, but next year, we're looking at, for starters, social studies, needing a full-time social studies. If you remember the last few years, we've added like two people and then divided them up into little tents to allocate, but we have enough students to justify another teacher in math, and in science, and in social studies. And you heard Andy Hoy talk about that when he was here. So, just putting that idea in your mind that you can't do level services forever and expect to be able to maintain, you know, desirable class size and all, so. So, that's the secondary. Tomorrow, we will be meeting with the four elementary teachers, and they will come in a similar way, prepared, knowing what their enrollment is projected to be, and what the kindergarten is projected to be. Actually, we'll be making that decision tomorrow, whether we need that additional section. I think we will. But in any event, they will come with, with all their facts and figures, and knowing what their staffing is, and how is it going to work, and what will class size be, and so on. And, and we don't expect a, a big issue there, because our enrollment for next year will not be very different at all from our enrollment this year. In fact, it'll be a little bit smaller. So, we didn't anticipate a problem there in the first place, but we did at, at the secondary level. So, we just have to keep in mind that eventually, you have to pay the piper. You can squeeze, squeeze through one year, one building, but not across the board without adding if we're growing. And a growth of 40 kids in one year at one building is significant.
Okay, we will keep that in mind as we work through the summer on our planning and-
But then, that-
Michelle, do you have a question? You look like you-
Thanks, I'm sorry. What's the, what's the enrollment for the class of 2021? The incoming freshman class at the high school? Do you know the number of students coming in?
I have it.
360.
I have it.
It was in the last one's class.
I have it. So, this year's eighth grade class is 360.
Okay. And then, what's the outgoing?
The outgoing is 296 plus one.
297.
But then, we-
But I have the plus one, a couple.
Okay. I thought the enrollment was a little more than 40. I thought it was going to be more like 50 or 60 new students at the high school, just from that map that we were-
So, yeah, just the current classes compared to each other?
And there'll be some net in and out.
Yeah.
Right. No, I just, and sometimes we pick kids, we pick students up too sometimes, so, correct?
That's, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right, yeah.
But there's also some kids that move in and out. So, this is net in and out. It's no projection of new kids coming in, it's simply going out and coming in. And then, we take off of that typically, the 20 or so kids, we expect to be going to private school for next year.
Okay.
And that number used to be bigger, but now, many of those students who are going to local private schools, particularly parochial schools, are leaving in grade seven, because their schools have gone from seventh to 12 schools. So, so now, we deduct from our estimates 20 kids from the seventh to eighth grade class and the other 20 from the eighth to ninth, that's a more accurate way. Not more kids overall than ever went, but different times.
Then, the seventh grade class is 372, so that's the biggest class. So, we continue to have, and then, the sixth grade class is 363. So, those three classes are the peak, except third grade goes back to 363. But, so we're at the, the bubble is-
Passing. It is, yeah, it is passing.
It'll drop down two years from now, but then go pop back up again, because we have that class of 363 that's currently in the third grade.
Yeah.
And then, after that, they all go down to 300, and less.
Yeah, but then, that's what the high school is now, so it gets, it doesn't, it doesn't, yeah, but it doesn't, it's not dropping precipitously.
Right.
Leveling off. Any other, we're kind of on subcommittee and project reports. Anybody else have anything that came up the last couple of weeks?
We've been on hiatus.
Yeah.
Have to get back to work.
Just for all of us, for our hail and farewell of the responses, I've gotten quite a few. It looks like Sunday, June 4th is today, so we will send out more details about that, and-
Can I make just two quick additions?
Yeah.
Would like to announce the Fourth Annual Hingham Sports Partnership Golf Tournament, which is May 19th. It's going to be held at the South Shore Country Club, and I think the best way to follow through would be go hingamssports.com. Hingamssports.com. And the second fundraiser I'd just like to mention is the Hingham Rotary is sponsoring a golf tournament on June 19th at the South Shore Country Club for the benefit of SNAP. And the way to touch bases with this fundraiser would be www.hinghamrotarygolf.com. Hinghamrotarygolf.com. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. On that note, item number nine.
Motion. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Do you second, Cynthia?
Aloud in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.